We'll move up the Albert Jones thing, right?
No, you go ahead and say that.
Yeah.
I ask you for additions or deletions.
I will go to G.
Although you're deleting C.
Even though that, we're not going to replace it.
Yeah, right.
We're just going to put that G.
We're going to move up the Albert Jones thing, right?
You want me to move up and say that too, or you want to do that?
No, you go ahead and say that. Now, have you got that? Gerald, you got that?
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah.
Are you going to make some comments?
Yeah, probably all of us will want to, but yeah, I definitely want to. And let me just, at that point, let everybody else, or turn it back over to you before we actually read it, okay? I'll make some comments, turn it back over to you, and then after everybody's finished, then I'll read that. Is that okay?
And then I think Albert's going to come up and make some remarks.
And then I read, I read the second part.
You've got two on that.
Yeah, I read the second part.
You've got A and B on the introductions.
Okay. Who goes first? Me or you?
You do.
I do, okay.
You're only going to do A and then?
Only A?
Yeah, leave B, leave B.
Okay, all right. Leave B.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We're going to start the meeting. It's good to have everybody here. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the row.
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Galt.
Present.
Commissioner Kaler.
Present.
Commissioner Watkins.
Present.
Mayor Paxton.
Present. It's my pleasure that we have with us tonight Pastor Mike Williams, Associate Pastor of Lono First Baptist Church. Pastor, it's good to have you with us, and if you'll come up to the podium to give the invocation, and then I'd like to ask Commissioner Abraham, after that, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So if we would stand, please.
Would you pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, this afternoon, we acknowledge you as the King of Kings and the Lord of Lords. Father, we realize tonight that you're not only our Creator, but you're our Sustainer, and you're also our Savior. And tonight, Father, we pause to thank you for this great nation that we live in, for the freedoms that we experience in this great country. Father, we also pause to thank you for the military men and women in uniform that protect us each day, and we ask a blessing upon them. Father, we pray for our political leaders, our city leaders, the leadership of this city. Father, we pray that you would bless them, that you would give them wisdom and insight in all the decisions that they make, that not only concerns this city, but the citizenship of this county. And Father, we just ask that everything that's done here tonight would be to honor and to glorify you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. Very nice to have you. Appreciate you coming. Okay, we have with us tonight Mark Thompson, Director of Parks. Mark is our acting city manager. While the city manager is out of town, Mark, do we have any additions or deletions?
Yes, sir. We have three. We're going to move under entered ordinances introductions, we'll move A, renaming of Henry Clay Park, up to...
Before the minutes.
Before the minutes, okay. And we're going to add G under entered ordinances introduction, which is convention center contract introduction, and we are going to remove D. Is it still D? Under the Fire Department introduction, under Fire Prevention Safety.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. So we will proceed then with ordinance introductions, A, and Commissioner Watkins has had.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
We need to make a motion to suspend the order of business.
All right.
I move that the rules for conducting city commission meetings be suspended insofar as they are in conflict with the prudent agenda for this meeting. Otherwise, the rules are to remain in full force and effect.
Second.
Okay, questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. Okay, Commissioner Watkins?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a special night to honor a special citizen of Paducah, Kentucky, one Albert Jones. Just to give you a little brief history of his life, all of it's impressive, but probably the most impressive, he was the team captain on the Paducah-Tillman High School football team while he was there, a standout, an all-star. And he attended University of Kentucky Law School, graduating, served in the U.S. Army, and served in Korea. He worked for the FBI, and he was elected Commonwealth Attorney and served for 17 years as the prosecutor from McCracken County. And then he was appointed by former President Jimmy Carter as U.S. Attorney for three and a half years. And then he was elected to the State House of Representatives, serving eight years, and then elected mayor of Paducah and serving five years. So he's had a life of public service to this community. I think he's one of our local heroes, and we want to honor him tonight by having Albert Jones become permanent in this community and naming a park after him. And it's special, and you can see how special you are, Albert Jones, because we're renaming the Henry Clay Park, and Henry Clay, and tracing my family back, is my sixth cousin. That may not sound very close, but in his generation, my great-grandfather on back, John Watkins, was his first cousin. And they were also brothers-in-laws, they married sisters. And something I hope also becomes common for the three of us is, he was a state representative. So we're going to propose that we rename the Henry Clay Park, the Albert Jones Park. And before we do that, I'm sure every single one of y'all will want to make some comments about our Albert.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, this is an introduction. We will have to have a final reading.
I need to read this, though.
Yes, you do.
Yeah, let me read. Okay.
I couldn't remember whether you'd done that or not.
No, I probably kind of did, but really didn't. "I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled 'An Ordinance Renaming Henry Clay Park to Albert Jones Park.' This ordinance that summarizes follows that the name of Henry Clay Park, located between Joe Bryan Drive, Guthrie Avenue, B Street, and South 21st Street, be renamed to Albert Jones Park."
Second.
So, but I would like to call on Mayor Pro Tim Kaler for a few remarks.
Well, you know, Henry Clay was your sixth cousin.
Sixth cousin.
Albert's my kissing cousin. Because, Albert, how's my husband related to you?
Through my father, through his entombment.
Okay, so we're kind of related.
There you go.
So we're proud to be doing this for you tonight, Albert, and you certainly made a big impression on Paducah, and we're proud to do this for you.
Thank you. Commissioner Abraham?
Man, good people come out of Tillman, don't they? It's amazing when you watch freshmen come through the doors, and the kids, they walk up and down the hall, and at Tillman, there's a Hall of Fame. There's one for athletics, and then there's one for students that's gone on to make major contributions to the community. And Mr. Jones is there. And so there's all of these kids, they walk by, and if you ask them, nah, I don't want to read that. But every now and then, you'll see them, they'll stop and they'll read their history. So the impact that you've made, not only from a political standpoint, but just being an example for another freshman that came through Tillman doors, graduated and did great things, man, so congratulations to you.
Commissioner Galt?
I think that's very true, that you've made a huge impact in this community, and I know you have lots of fans, and I always hear a lot of great Albert Jones stories, no matter where I go. So we appreciate all you've done for this community, and this is a great honor to be doing this. But I would love, Mayor, if you don't mind, to have Albert come up and just maybe tell us one of his favorite Albert Jones stories.
I was going to ask him to do that, but first, I'd like to say that Albert and I kid with each other a lot, but we love each other, and he's been a tremendous factor in my life. I very much wanted to be a city commissioner. I ran and was elected, and I was at my first meeting. Really didn't know what to expect, and sort of apprehensive about this whole politics thing after being in banking. So Albert called me aside, and he said, "Look, I'm not going to run again for mayor." And he said, "I think you ought to run." And I said, "Albert, you know, I don't even know whether I'm going to be happy as a city commissioner." I said, "Give me about six months, and I'll get back with you and let you know." And he said, "Well, do that, but you need to do it." So I thought about it, and I thought, you know, if Albert can do it, anybody can do it. So I did, and Albert has been a real confidant with me and for me, and Albert, I appreciate it. So Albert, come on up here and share a few remarks with us.
Well, most of my life, I had a captive audience of 12 people. 15 years ago. I want to correct a couple of that things. It was six years as a state representative and 13 and a half instead of 16. I'm not that old. And let's see what else.
I was close.
Yeah, all right. You're excused.
Reliant upon my memory, which is not very good.
You're excused. After all, I guided you through the community college, and now you teach out there, and you're an institution all those years. All right. Holding public office, particularly city office, is not for the timid. It is not definitely for the timid. Being mayor of the city was not difficult for me, because I'd spent 20 years of my life making people behave themselves. So it was just, you know, I've listened to every possible sad story in your life about why people do things, and I'm not sympathetic. I used to talk to people, my mother and father divorced when I was three, and I lived with a bunch of different families. Nobody ever mistreated me. And I used to have these people come in and say, "Well, I'm adopted," you know, "or my mother and daddy divorced." I don't like that kind of talk. That's ridiculous talk. That's a cop-out, and that's all it is. And one of these days, let me tell you something, you haven't got much time if you're going to do anything. There was not, five years was not enough time to do what I needed to do. It's just that I was 71, and I think you need to get out sometimes. 71 and a half, I think. Anyway, I got to climb a 14,000 footer after I got out and lived. But I think that there's two or three things you do, and this park was important. You get a lot of criticism for spending the money that you do, making the downtown look nice, cleaning up things, putting curbs over in neighborhoods that haven't never had them, but are not high-taxpaying neighborhoods. You get a lot of criticisms from that, but I want to tell you something. You cannot have a successful city and attract people to come here and keep the people you got left in town if you don't spend that money and do it. Now, you've got to step on toes. One of my big things was, I think people ought to clean their property up. I just have no use for somebody that's physically able, and even with their own disability, hell, they ought to be able to go out and fix their yard up. I didn't like people keeping their cars parked in the yard. Those were pet peeves of mine. I hired a fellow that couldn't, a retired fireman that had a kind of a personality like mine, and he was my hitman, they say. But he could go out, and he knew what I liked and what I didn't like, and the word got out, and the inspection office was very busy in those days. And that's what you've got to do, just like Lower Town. Okay, before Buzz and that fellow, what was his name? I forgot now, but anyway.
The artist, Mark Barone.
Yeah. Before they came to me, there were some houses down there that were in bad shape, and so I said, "Look, clean them up." So you give people a chance. Well, they're not going to do a darn thing until you can get their attention. One of them, that yard that was, I was going to tear that old house where the cow was on down, but the house next to it, get this, the yard was fenced in in the back with metal bed springs. How ridiculous can you get? So anyway, we cleaned that up, did it out there, and then the lawyers started suing us. Fortunately, that was the nicest thing about being mayor. You had a good law firm over there, and I said, "We don't compromise, we don't arbitrate, we don't know nothing. Take everybody to the mat." Wasn't long before the lawyers found out they couldn't earn a living representing those deadbeats, and people started fixing their property up. The lumber mills liked it, because they were selling a lot of lumber. So what I'm telling you, you've got to keep the city going. Noble Park, I don't mind telling you, it's a known story. You know, Lane Peck, friend of mine, I knew his wife. Her dad was chairman of the school board for a long time, or was on the city school board. Worked for him, Livingston. Y'all don't remember him, Livingston, but the guy in the middle does. He, well, Lane, she had polio when she was young. Lane was terribly in love with her. I mean, it was just one of those marriages. She got sick and ultimately passed away. Lane owned all that property behind Noble Park that went over to the Cairo Road. So I think I had do little to do it, and maybe one of my roommates in college, Bill Howerton, who's some connection to, you know, the Carson family, and Lane was Carson family. So I said, "Look, he loved his wife, his deceased wife. He's got that property over there. I want him to deed it to the city, and we'll make a monument to her, an lasting monument to her as you go into the entrance." And that was done. He readily did it. He was glad to do it. He was happy. But it's because I personally knew him, you know, and I personally knew his relationship with his wife. It's a love story. Same way, it was a little bit different. A lot of people mad on this park that you're naming after me. They'll probably even be madder against, a couple of them died, though, I think. But anyway, that had to be done. That's a nice neighborhood over there. People ought to have a place to walk, to walk safely. I had do little to talk to Lanell Brawls. You know who I'm talking about? She was my eighth-grade teacher at Washington Junior High. She wanted to leave a lot more property, but it wasn't, that property out there belonged to people on her husband's side of the family, Clyde's side of the family. But Lanell did leave the city some property. The city built that park out there. You can do the same thing with the one half. There's not any sidewalks on Buckner Lane out there, or those side streets. It's a nice place to go walk. You want to fight the obesity problem? Fight it with giving people a place to walk and safely. Thing I wished I had have done, and I wished I'd have done it, I wished I had have plotted a route around Paducah to ride a bicycle safely. Y'all have talked about that. That needs to be done. It's things like that that attract people to a town.
Quality of life.
Hell, yes. It means, particularly, think of all the people that are competing for factories and everything else. If I was up north and wanted to locate a factory down there, I'm probably going to send a good friend of mine down to manage it. Well, I don't want to send him to some sinkhole, right?
Right.
All right. That's it. That's number one. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it, and I'm honored. I'm truly honored. To paraphrase, or to borrow from Mark Twain, because you think usually when you get something named after you're dead, to paraphrase Mark Twain, he said, after there had been a report of his death, and he said, "The report of my recent demise is grossly exaggerated." And he quoted that in the paper. And then I adopt the theory at 82 and a half that with my last breath, I'm going to try to take another one.
Albert, what's your nickname? Alligator Out?
Albert, I think you've given this commission good advice, because you're right. When you're sitting up here, it's not about making friends, it's about making the tough decisions. Nobody knows the decisions better than this group of body right up here. And so you've got to make decisions. Some of them are going to be popular, some of them are not going to be popular. But we're doing the best we can do, and I think that's excellent advice for this commission and for future commissions.
Phil, there was two things that I meant to say. Number one, people haven't got good sense if they go vote for somebody that's going to hold office, only doing and making decisions based on how can this get me reelected.
Right.
That's the worst kind of office holder, in my opinion.
Right.
And you get a lot of those. Number two, we are blessed, we're un-blessed, or what the phrase would be used, by a lot of, not a lot, but there are people here that I call them the "guinners." They're against everything. They don't, living in the city, you've got to have rules and regulations when people live in close together. Otherwise, everything's going to go potty. Neighbor's not going to complain about another neighbor and get in trouble and have a miserable life the rest of their life. So the city's got to step in and solve those things and do something about it. And it's no sense waiting around. I've found that these slim landlords, they're not going to fix their property up. They're not going to do it until you make them do it.
That's right.
And it's no sense to negotiate. You waste your time.
Right.
And before you know it, you're out of office and going on with your life. So those two things, don't listen to the "guinners." They were against the sewer merger. They were against the water districts coming in. Now I see one of them's come in recently.
Right.
Coming in, or whatever, hindering.
Right, hindering.
When people find out what was going to happen to their pocketbook, how are you going to track industry if you didn't have a joint series? You've got some little guy that got a little sewer system out there that can't keep it up. You can't do that. You've got to, go ahead. So, just like I told one of those naysayers back then, he was an office holder, and I told him, "Look, you know, your problem is, is you want people to go to the bathroom in the backyard like they did 100 years ago around here." Okay, that's all.
Thank you, Albert.
Thanks.
That's why he was the captain of the football. It's not okay to drop that ball, man.
All right, Commissioner Abraham, if you'll read the minutes.
I move that the reading of the minutes for July 10th, 2012 meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. We've got some appointments. Let's see, do I have what I need to read?
Well, I thought you did.
Whereas, I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint Heather Coltharp as a member of the Historical and Architectural Review Commission. This term will expire June 4th, 2015.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the recommendation of Mayor Paxton in reappointing Heather Coltharp as a member of the Historical and Architectural Review Commission.
Second.
All right, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. Whereas, I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Chavine Duncan Herring to replace David Boggs and Craig F. Newbern Jr. to replace Art Davis as members of the Paducah Human Rights Commission. Term will expire July 24th, 2014.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the recommendation of Mayor Paxton in appointing Chavance Duncan Herring and Craig F. Newbern Jr. as members of the Paducah Human Rights Commission.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. Like, happy to have these qualified people on these boards, and certainly appreciate them serving. Okay, motions, Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed, or documents, insurance certificates, gem steel construction, two contracts agreements, Lamar lease for placing of billboard on property located at Wayne Sullivan Drive at the end of Fourth Street in Island Creek, interlocal cooperation agreement with McCracken County for the Edward Byrne JAG Award, Motorola renewal agreement for fiscal year 2013 for 800 megahertz radios, West Kentucky Community and Technical College for the operation of public and governmental access channels 2 and 11, Kentucky Division of Waste Management Recycling Grant Award, 2012-2013 Kentucky Pride Fund Grant, Maintenance of Floodwall Murals with Herb Rowe, three fiscal year 2013 contracts for services executed by city manager, Midtown Alliance Annual Services Contract signed by the city manager, Crowdest Maintenance and Cleaning Services signed by city manager, Brook Stadium Commission fiscal year 2013, Paducah Concert Band fiscal year 2013 contract, Upper Town Heritage Foundation, Market House Theater, River Heritage Museum, Paducah Film Society, Yazer Arts Center, National Quilt Museum, four change order number one, bluegrass uniforms for Fire Department Uniformed Services, ordinance number 2012-77938, five deed for 626 Burnett Street, MO number 1671, six City of Paducah Department of Finance, financial report period ending May 31, 2012, and seven, Paducah Water Financial Highlights for May and June 2012, bids, uniforms for EPW and Parks Department, Aramac Uniformed Services and UniFirst Corporation.
Second.
Okay, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. Go to municipal orders, Commissioner Abraham.
Upon the recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Okay. Cindy, what do you got for us?
Okay, we have started a practice of creating a note where if you look at a line item, it's not immediately recognizable what it is we're doing here. We have a couple of such items that we've done that here tonight, so hopefully the notes make it understandable.
It does.
Okay.
It does, thanks.
Okay, any questions for Cindy?
Yep.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. Thank you, Cindy. Commissioner Galt?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order adopting the amendment of the goals and objectives for the 2025 Comprehensive Plan for the City of Paducah be adopted.
Second.
Okay, Steve?
Good evening. In 2007, the current comprehensive plan was adopted. At that time, it was a joint city-county comprehensive plan. Statutes require that the goals and objectives be reviewed every five years by the planning commission, and if there's any amendments proposed, it has to come to the city commission for adoption. So what you see is the original goals and objectives adopted in 2007 with some minor adjustments throughout the document. You will notice that one section, and that is on page four, which is chapter six, that relates to growth management. For the most part, that entire chapter has been stricken. At the time of the preparation of the comprehensive plan, the city and county were jointly doing this, so growth management was a major component of it. At this time, the county has not adopted the joint city-county comprehensive plan, so...
Okay, any questions for Steve?
All the changes are underlined, correct?
That's correct, mhm.
Okay.
And there's some strike-throughs also that you noticed.
Right. I just wanted to make sure everything that I was seeing that was underlined was a change.
Yes.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler. Mr. Kahler.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye.
Mr. Kahler, thanks, Steve.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute the declaration of restrictive covenants for conservation deed as required by the United States Army Corps of Engineers and the Kentucky Division of Water, in accordance with the approved mitigation plan for the Pecan Drive Bridge Project be adopted.
Second.
Any questions for Rick? You want to just make, just make a couple comments real quickly?
This is related to some mitigation efforts that's ongoing with the project over on Pecan Drive, where we relocated a portion of our creek, and it's more environmental mitigation associated with that project, so that's what that's about.
Good. Wanted the public to understand that. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Galt.
Aye.
Mr. Kahler.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye.
We're going to ordinances and adoptions. We have talked about these, and we're ready to vote, so we'll not spend a whole lot of time. So we'll start out with Commissioner Watkins.
I move that the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance rescinding, ordinance number 2012-57923, an approving termination of a contract with Bluegrass Fire Equipment for the purchase of fire structural turnout gear for use by the fire department, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract regarding the same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. On May 17th, 2012, City and the Bluegrass Fire Equipment, Inc., hearing after Bluegrass executed and entered into an agreement for the purchase of structural turnout gear for use by the fire department based on a bid submitted by Bluegrass. After further review, city staff determined that the bid did not meet the technical requirements of the bid requirements. As such, the parties have now mutually agreed to terminate and cancel the agreement between them. This ordinance rescinds in its entirety ordinance 2012-57923 adopted on May 8th, 2012, and authorizes and approves the termination and cancellation of and authorizes the mayor to execute same.
Second.
Okay, any questions? All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Galt.
Aye.
Mr. Kahler.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Fire Department Service and Supply Company for the purchase of fire structural turnout gear for the use by the fire department, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. Authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Fire Department Services and Supply in the amount of $21,675 for fire structural turnout gear for use by the fire department.
Second.
Questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Galt.
Aye.
Mr. Kahler.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving change order number two with Bluegrass Uniforms, Inc., for uniforms for the fire department employees, and authorizing the mayor to execute said change order number two. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby approves change order number two with Bluegrass Uniforms, Inc., for additional items due to the incorporation of the Fire Prevention Division into the fire department. The mayor here is authorized to execute change order number two with Bluegrass Uniforms, Inc., with unit prices as stated in the change order being for the same time period as noted in the contract, beginning upon the execution of the change order.
Second.
Okay, questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Galt.
Aye.
Mr. Kahler.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye.
Commissioner Kahler.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the proposal of Kentucky League of Cities for a three-year rate guarantee for workers' compensation, liability insurance, and property insurance coverage for the City of Paducah, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city accepts the proposal of Kentucky League of Cities for a three-year guarantee for workman's compensation, liability insurance, and property insurance coverage for the City of Paducah, ending June 30th, 2015.
Second.
Good job, Cindy. Was there much negotiations that needed to be done?
We did some altering of the original rate guarantee.
Yeah, you're happy with the end result? Good, good job. Any questions for Cindy? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Galt.
Aye.
Mr. Kahler.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the finance director to pay Kentucky League of Cities for workers' compensation, liability insurance, and property insurance coverage for the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the finance director to pay Kentucky League of Cities in the total amount of $913,963 for workers' compensation, liability insurance, and property insurance coverage for the City of Paducah for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2013.
Second.
Paducah's taxpayer dollars at work, right? Any questions for Cindy? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Galt.
Aye.
Mr. Kahler.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for the closing of a 20-foot alley from Ninth Street and Paducah and Louisville Railroad located between Madison Street and Harrison Street, and authorizes the mayor to execute all documents necessary to complete the transfer of property. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the closing of a portion, a 20-foot alley from Ninth Street and Paducah and Louisville Railroad located between Madison Street and Harrison Street, and authorizes the mayor to execute all documents necessary to complete the transfer of property to the property owners in or abutting the public ways to be closed.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Galt.
Aye.
Mr. Kahler.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the alternate concrete bid of Wilkins Construction Company for the construction of the Greenway Trail Phase One project, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the alternate concrete bid of Wilkins Construction Company in the amount of $543,759 for construction of the Greenway Trail Phase One project, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Any comments, Rick?
Any questions? That's what I'm here for.
Rick, I've had some people ask, why are we doing concrete instead of asphalt? Because, the runners is what I hear from, so do you want to speak on that, why we're doing the concrete?
When we, when we offered the bid for, I guess, the competitive bid process, we offered asphalt versus concrete, because I wanted to see what the cost differential would be. Because the concrete's going to give you more durability, it's going to give you better life, it's going to give you more ease of maintenance, it's actually going to be cooler for walkers and dogs, because it's not black, it's not attracting the sun, it's white, and it's reflecting the sun. And then the other thing is, is as far as the life, I mentioned longevity, I've actually seen a concrete trail on top of a levee in Algiers, Louisiana, and when I saw that, I thought, if we ever do get to do that, that's, that's the way we need to go. The asphalt trails in the park are a good example of what I'm talking about, as far as the asphalt trails that are around the pond, you see how the grass grows up between them, it becomes very difficult to maintain. So I can appreciate, I guess, the athleticism and there were athletes that would like to run on it, but you know, the shock differential between that and, and I guess, going to the added expense of having the concrete trail, I think it's going to be a better benefit and a better return for us in the long run than, than having the asphalt trail. The asphalt trail is actually cheaper, but in the long run, it'll probably wind up costing us more money in the maintenance.
Any other questions? It's exciting to, to finally have the, the start of, from the smoke shop, going down to the convention center. Rick's calling it Phase Two, I really actually call it Phase Three, because...
Actually, we call it Phase One, but...
All right.
When we get done with it, we'll get done with it.
And then, when we get completed with that, then hopefully in a, in a very speedy fashion, we can go from the bridge all the way to the park and, and where the Greenway Trail ends currently. So it's an exciting time. Mr. Jones talks about quality of life, and this is definitely a quality of life issue. I have about five and a half more months to go, and as mayor, and in my office, I have, and I send it out to the department heads, the priorities that I would like to have completed before I leave office. First is, is an announcement on the hotel, second is maybe a groundbreaking possibility on the riverfront project, then you've got the Greenway Trail, you've got the Dog Park, and what were the others, Rick? Do you remember? The convention center to, to, to be paid back the, the money that we have lost from the convention center. And, and there are seven, seven bullets that I would like to, to have completed by the time I leave office, and, but the Greenway Trail is certainly one of the ones that is going to be fantastic, so Rick, I appreciate your due diligence on all that. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Galt.
Aye.
Mr. Kahler.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye.
Commissioner Kahler.
I think it's odd that I'm having to read this particular one tonight, because my daughters had to move out of, they've had to move out of their house for a month, because they have bats in their attic.
I'll be darned.
They live near the James River.
Okay.
And it seems to be a common problem in the area where they live. So they have to have people come in to do a bat watch.
Do they have a bell free?
Find out where they're coming in the attic, and then they have to seal up the area, and then go into the attic and remove the bats. So anyway, here we go.
The Indiana bats.
I don't know what these are.
They're a brown bat.
[laughing]
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving a memorandum of agreement between the United States Department of the Interior, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and the City of Paducah to promote the survival and recovery of the Indiana bat, authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement, and authorizing the finance director make payment to the Indiana Bat Conservation Fund in association with the Ojai River Boat Launch Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah approves a memorandum of agreement between the United States Department of Interior, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and the City of Paducah to promote the survival and recovery of the Indiana bat in association with the Ojai River Boat Launch Project, and authorizes the mayor to execute said agreement. Further, the finance director is hereby authorized and directed to make payment to the Indiana Bat Conservation Fund in the amount of $5,742.
Second.
You know, it's funny, today I was eating down JP's, and somebody was down there, parked their car, which, it was convertible, and, and some of the birds that are hanging out around Market House had done some work there in the, in their convertible. And they knew I was the mayor, and they came in there, they were mad as could be. And then I'm constantly stopped about the ducks at the park, and why can't, the geese, whatever they are. So do I have to vote yes on this?
I just, I need three votes, whether you vote yes or no. I don't care. You can vote no, two of you can vote no, I just need three.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Galt.
Aye.
Mr. Kahler.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
No.
Thank you.
I got a question. What exactly did the folks want you to do with the convertible?
They wanted us to take a shotgun, and, and you know, they're, they're around the Market House, as you know, and as people walk into Market House, they're getting hit from all sides, and...
Get rid of them.
Get rid of them, yeah.
I absolutely wouldn't leave a car that's a convertible and go parked on the street with the top down.
The best way is to introduce an owl.
Yeah.
It's a natural predator.
Yeah. How about throwing a muscle up there? All right. All right, Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving a grant agreement with the Kentucky Housing Corporation for a 2012 home matching grant for the Fountain Avenue revitalization area of the City of Paducah, and authorizing the mayor to execute said grant agreement. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby approves a grant agreement with the Kentucky Housing Corporation to obtain a 2012 home matching grant in the amount of $309,500 to build seven single-family structures in the Fountain Avenue revitalization area, and authorizes the mayor to execute said agreement. The city will provide matching funds in the amount of $84,000 for this project.
Second.
You know, Steve, you can't hardly drive around in that area without seeing stakes up, where houses are getting ready to start. It's really an exciting time. Yeah, really is. Okay, any comments, questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Galt.
Aye.
Mr. Kahler.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye.
Before I start the annual contract for services, unfortunately, I have to meet Secretary Peters from our Energy Cabinet in Frankfurt, so I'm going to have to leave, and I'd like to ask Mayor Pro Tim Kahler to complete the meeting. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Greater Paducah Economic Development Council for specific services. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Greater Paducah Economic Development Council in the amount of $250,000 to be paid in equal quarterly allocations for, of $62,500 for performance of services as outlined in said contract. This contract shall expire June 30th, 2012.
Second.
You have anything to say on it, Mark?
These are just the contracts, the annual contracts, and this is what was budgeted in the city's funds.
Thank you. Commissioner Galt?
Oh, we have to have a vote.
Hang on one second. This contract shall expire June 30th, 2013.
Second.
Roll call, city clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Galt. Mr. Kayler?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton? Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Barclay Regional Airport for providing general aviation and air carrier services. This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Barclay Regional Airport in the amount of $136,430 payable in quarterly installments of $34,107.50 each for providing general aviation and air carrier services to the citizens of McCracken County and surrounding regions. This contract shall expire June 30, 2013.
Second.
And they've done a good job and they reduced that by 10,000 this year, their request.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Paducah Area Transit System for public transportation services. This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Paducah Area Transit System in the amount of $225,000 to be paid in equal quarterly allocations of $56,250 for public transportation services for the Paducah-McCracken County area. This contract expires June 30, 2013.
Second.
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc., for the Community Scholarship Program. This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc., in the amount of $125,000 for the Community Scholarship Program. This contract shall expire June 30, 2013.
Second.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc., for Paducah School of Art. This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc., in the amount of $75,000 to be paid in equally quarterly allocations of $18,750 for the Paducah Art School. This contract shall expire June 30, 2013.
Second. And I believe they're getting ready to get started on their project in July.
Yep.
That's great. City clerk?
I'm sorry. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and the County of McCracken, Kentucky for an animal control program. This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the City of Paducah hereby approves an interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and the County of McCracken, Kentucky to continue to cooperatively administer a single animal control program, and authorizes the mayor to execute said interlocal agreement. This agreement shall remain in full force and effective for a period of two years, and shall automatically renew for an additional period of two years unless either party terminates this agreement.
Second.
Any discussion? City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 70 Parks and Recreation of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows: That Section 7032 Public Parks, Playgrounds, and Recreational Areas Available to the Public is amended to change the name of Henry Clay Park to Albert Jones Park.
Second. Two seconds on all these. City clerk? Is that an introduction, right? We don't vote on any of these.
And this is just a organization of the ordinances that we have, that we have a list of all parks, and this will adopt the name change.
Commissioner Watkins? You're busy tonight.
I am. Okay, here it is. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the U.S. Department of Justice for a 2012 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Accountability Grant Award to be used by the Paducah Police Department. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The mayor is hereby authorized to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the U.S. Department of Justice for a 2012 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Accountability Grant Award in the amount of $16,035 for the purchase of three digital in-car cameras, two patrol rifles, and accessories.
Second.
Plenty of seconds, anyway.
Stacy?
Good evening.
Aye.
We just need your authorization so we can begin spending this money. No match, no strings.
That's great, no match. We like that.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a 2012-2013 Kentucky Governor's Highway Safety Program reimbursement grant award with the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety, a division of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The mayor is hereby authorized to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety, a division of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, for the 2012-2013 Kentucky Governor's Highway Safety Program Grant Award in the amount of $36,200 for overtime hours and at, attend a state-sponsored conference. This grant does not require any local cash or in-kind match.
Second. Stacy?
Again, no strings attached. It'll allow our officers to go out and do extra enforcement, enforcing the traffic laws, and hopefully making the streets of Paducah much safer.
All right, thank you.
Well, that's much needed, I saw, and it's reflected here locally, too, that nationally, traffic fatalities are up 13.5% this year over last year, and ours is probably up even higher than that, isn't it?
We've had six this year.
Six in the city limits.
Three have been on the interstate.
Yeah. It's been a deadly year, so...
It has.
All right. Thank you Stacy. Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Airmark Uniform Services for the purchase of uniforms for employees in the Engineering, Public Works, and Parks Departments, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The City of Paducah accepts the bid of Airmark Uniform Services dated July 17, 2012, and read aloud on July 19, 2012 for the Engineering, Public Works, and Parks Department employees for a period of two years, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. Said contract may be renewable for two one-year additional terms.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. City managers report?
We have the contract.
I have it.
Oh, where's that?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with the Convention Center Corporation for specific services. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with the Convention Center Corporation in the amount of $100,000 to be paid in quarterly installments, first and second quarter, $34,500 each, less one half of insurance premiums in each quarter, third, fourth quarter, $15,500 each, to market and operate the Expo Center and Julian Carroll Convention Center. This contract shall expire June 30, 2013.
Second.
Any discussion? Now, the city managers report?
The, spoke with Jeff earlier today, and he wanted me to make sure that I pointed out that on Friday, we'll be opening bids on the swimming pool, the first of two bids on the swimming pool, and so we'll find out a lot about our money situation with that come Friday. And we'll have that presentation for you at the August 7 Commission Meeting and to do a second reading on the 14th. Also, the Dog Park grand opening will be on August the 15th at 2:00 p.m. And so we'll be ready to go at that point.
Has the Candle Club contacted you?
They have talked to us. So we'll be looking forward to that and make sure their sign is done properly. And all the signs will be ordered and in and ready and up already at that point. You'll see fence going in next week.
All right.
That's it.
Thank you. Any commissioners' comments?
Just want to remind everyone of the Emancipation Celebrations coming up. The city always looks so beautiful when that happens, and our guys work really hard to, to keep it looking that way before, during, and after. So there'll be a different, some different license plates around, and it's always a big time, so if you have a chance to go out to any of the activities, find a itinerary and try to do that.
I think Pam has sent that out to everybody, and the parade is Saturday morning at 11. Lineup starts at 10, for those who are interested.
Week from this Saturday, isn't it?
Yes, a week from the Saturday, the 4th.
And tell everybody where that starts, Mark.
That starts at Washington Street and ends up in Coleman Park. And it's a fun time for everybody, walking a couple times.
Any public comments? All right, we don't have an executive session tonight, so we are adjourned. Thank you.
Fifty-eight minutes.